Okay, everybody. I think we'll try to get going. We have a lot to cover tonight and I also want to be respectful of your time. So, welcome. My name is Matt Johnson. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board and we're very glad to have all of you here tonight. We have been at work on the Planning Board over the past several months on a set of zoning[36.54][36.54]initiatives that we think have pretty wide-ranging implications for the town. And so, we felt that it was very important at this juncture before we put our warrant articles into the town warrant to gather as much public feedback as we can. So hence, tonight's forum. And we hope to make it interactive and to be able to hear as much from you as we talk to you. So, I will though start off by giving about a half hour overview presentation. I might be able to finish a little faster, we'll see. And then what we'll do is we will break out into four groups. And you know, you can choose whichever topic you like, but there will be one group for each of the four initiatives. So we'll have people that will be there kind of handling the next level of detail around either the accessory dwellings, it's two-family housing, the Thro Depot, transitory oriented development, or the Planned Residential Development Bylaw changes that we're proposing. So, each, you know, one of these groups will have a member or two of the Planning Board that will be able to both give you some more information as well as listen to your feedback on these initiatives. And we'll do that for about 15 minutes, 15 to 20. And then we'll sort of ring a bell or something, knock on wood or whatever it takes. And then we'll do a second round of that. So if you have interest in two different topics, you'll have an opportunity to go and hear on another topic. So we figure, yeah, we can't get everybody all four, but typically people have interest in one spot or another. And then when we come back, the folks that were facilitating each of those breakouts will just give a brief summary of the feedback that they've heard. So as a group, we'll be able to hear the public feedback, you know, across all four initiatives. And then we'll open up for just sort of open discussion to time well, time willing. We'll see. Okay? So we hope to have it all wrapped up by 8:30. And again, I hope to hear from all of you this evening on these topics. So, let me just start by saying, you know, our thrust here is really to follow up on the work that was done over the past two years on the Comprehensive Long Range Plan. So tremendous amount of work that was done by a lot of people across town. And there was quite a lot of consensus, I think, on the direction that the town needs to go. And so, we really are doing the job or at the service of that long-range plan in the initiatives that we're proposing here. They're not sort of our own invention as much as they are following through on what the Comprehensive Long Range Plan suggested. And so, what they did, there were sort of three big ideas in the Long Range Plan. Big idea number two was about improving the range of housing choices that were available in the town. Right now, that choice, as we'll see, is a little bit constrained for a lot of people. And we wanted to make more options available. So, the goal, first goal that we have is to find ways to produce incremental units of housing that better represent Concord's future needs. And when you look at those future needs, you'll see that the demographics of the town are changing, that they're in general smaller household sizes in general. There's also people that want to age in place rather than moving off somewhere else. That extended families often have happened because children come back from after college or whatever, or elders move in with a family. And so, people would like to have the option to maybe not be right on top of each other, but to be able to accommodate those extended families. And then, there's an interest, general policy interest in smart growth to support our business centers by having nearby populations that can walk there and take advantage of the transit that we have, the shopping that's there, and the cultural resources that have been developed. So, how do we do that? Well, we have to do it in the face of what's been happening in the town, which is that really the economic incentives today for development are tilted in the opposite direction. So if you look at what's happened over the past couple of years, in the case of teardowns, which are, you know, a very common form of development here, what's happening is that instead of getting smaller unit sizes, we're getting bigger unit sizes. And instead of getting more affordable units of housing, we're getting less affordable units of housing. Typically, what happens is a $600,000 house or so gets, which is less than 1,500 square feet on average, gets torn down and is replaced by one that's nearly 4,000 square feet and costs nearly one and a half million dollars on average. And so while this does help the tax revenue of the town, it does create a different profile in terms of the housing unit size, the amount of income that's required to live in those units, and just the future implications for how that housing will be positioned for our growth as a community. The second thing that we do that's related to creating more housing is that less expensive housing. How do we do that? Well, one approach, of course, that we had in town meeting this past year was to provide more financial support for affordable housing. And that's affordable housing as defined by Massachusetts as 80% of the metropolitan area income. Then that's, that's for folks that have what's relatively low incomes. But what about folks that are in what we call the missing middle? These are folks that have incomes that are above that level, but that are not wealthy. Okay? And there's actually a dwindling amount of housing that's affordable for these people. And yet, it's very difficult to subsidize this type of housing because those folks are like a lot of other folks in town and everybody is in kind of that same economic spectrum. And so, we don't want to create situations in which folks that have less are subsidizing people who have maybe slightly more. So, we need to find market-driven approaches for supporting moderately affordable housing. And so, how do we do that? Well, and let me just dramatize kind of where that moderate affordability lies. What does it really mean today to be moderately affordable? Well, if you take a family of four and look at a single-family house, 80% of the metropolitan income for that family of four would be about $90,000. And if you use the kind of calculations that our regional housing office uses to decide what's affordable, they would come up with a $340,000 house that a family of four could afford to buy if they had that 80% income. And in fact, anything from there below that they're, you know, needing to be in an affordable house, you know, that the town is subsidizing. So we would subsidize a house to get to that 340,000. In fact, we do through many of our programs. But yet, Concord also has this definition moderately affordable, which goes up to 150% of the mean regional income. So there, it would be a family afford this earning practically $160,000 and it could be afford up to around a $700,000 house. And in fact, through our Planned Residential Development Bylaw and other programs in town, we do have some provisions to set aside housing in that realm of between state affordable and this moderately affordable area of 150%. Some is at 120%, some is, you know, but 110, I think, but 150 is the absolute limit there. And yet, if you look at the market rate housing within Concord, a median single-family home in Concord today is a little over a million dollars. So there's still quite a gap between that $700,000 level and the million-dollar level where that median house is. And so, not only do we need to look at, okay, how do we create something that fits into the moderately affordable realm, but how do we get something that can, you know, be built that's market rate but below today's mean? Okay? And just to further look at this in a little more detail, for a family of three that maybe was looking at a condo rather than at a, at a single-family home, the numbers are a little less extreme, but there's still a gap. So you'd get this family of three, they could maybe afford a $230,000 condo with, if they're a low income. But even up to moderately affordable, they could maybe go up to around a half a million dollars. But the median condo price or sale price over the past couple of years for condos in Concord has been 615,000. So over a $100,000 gap where there isn't currently that much housing that's available. Okay? So that's just trying to create the economic case and how affordability plays in here. But while we're creating additional units of housing and while we're trying to make them affordable, we also have to look after Concord's character as a town. It's always a top concern. And so, how do we do all of this without creating like large blocks of apartments, right, that might change the nature of the town center? Right? So, what we're proposing to do is to follow initiatives that maintain our existing dimensional requirements that are set out in our bylaws. So we have setbacks, we have height limits, we have what we call a floor area ratio that limits the total mass of a building on a lot. Whatever we're proposing here would have to fit into those criteria. So it doesn't sort of at a gross level look different than what we've had up until now. The second thing is to try to reuse existing structures as much as possible. So when we looked at accessory dwelling units, we said, hey, let's be able to take advantage of, you know, detached structures, garages, barns, that type of thing that are around. Carriage houses in a town like Concord, we have a lot of these kinds of structures. So how can we make, repurpose them into housing? And then, where there is a risk that the kind of work that we will do could disrupt the neighborhood, let's require special permits. Concord has, you know, a tradition of special permit processes. And while we want to have as much be by right as possible to encourage development, because of course, the more hurdles you put in the way, the harder it is to get someone to actually take advantage of these opportunities. We also want to be careful and not sort of open the floodgates in places where it might have negative impacts. So, what did that yield? Well, it's really three housing initiatives plus a mixed-use development that will hopefully fit into those same goals in the end. So the first is to simplify the process of creating an accessory dwelling unit. So today, there are some limited cases in which you can create an accessory dwelling unit, but it's pretty hard and not a lot of them are being developed. So we were, we're going to try to make that process a lot more straightforward so that more people take advantage of it. The second is to allow two-family houses, but to do that by special permit and to limit that to the Resident C District, at least for now. And we'll get into why in the course of the evening. And then the third thing is to revise our Planned Residential Development Bylaw so that, you know, we can achieve more of our town's goals through that bylaw than we are today. So what we'll do is we'll try to protect open space more and we'll also try to encourage sustainable development wherever possible. And then finally, with the mixed-use development, the Thro Depot Business District, which includes Crosby's Market, the depot itself, that whole business area, Starbucks, that, that whole area, is an area that is potentially ripe for development and for mixed-use development, where additional residences could be placed in, in there as well as business, new uses. And still, you know, right next to a transit infrastructure, it's the perfect example of a smart growth area. And it's, it's one that while certainly there is some historical sensitivity, there's less so than there is in the surrounding neighborhoods for sure. Okay? So there's an opportunity there as well. So these are the four things that are being pursued. The first three will yield warrant articles for 2020 Town Meeting and we have draft warrant articles, in fact, for both accessory dwelling and the two-family houses. And we hope to be reviewing draft warrant articles for the Planned Residential Development next week. The Thro Depot work is going to be a study that's going to take place this year. And if it yields new bylaw amendments, they would have come before Town Meeting, not until 2021. So it's a little less urgent than the others. So, let's look at a little bit more depth at what we mean by our accessory dwelling unit bylaw. And so, if you've got your hand out, this is a little bit smaller type than the others, but hopefully it's still legible. So, first thing we wanted to do was to make it a by right process. So all you need to do, if you're a homeowner and you wanted to create an accessory dwelling, is to go get a building permit. You wouldn't have to come in front of us and have us go through every little detail to give you a special permit, or the ZBA for that matter. So we, there are some exceptions. So if you want to get one that's extra big, or you're going to try to put it in the setback area of your backyard where it might be like looking over a fence into your neighbor, or if you're doing it on a non-conforming lot and you're expanding your structure a lot, these are all cases in which you would need a special permit. But by and large, if you're doing a 750 square foot addition or carve-out of your structure to create a separate accessory dwelling, you wouldn't, you would just go and go through the building permit process. Now, this is the kind of, these accessory dwellings, we're hoping to make available all throughout the town and all residential districts because I think there's potential everywhere for this. And, but that it's not a condo type of opportunity. So, one of the units, and it doesn't have to be the big unit, has to be owner-occupied. So if someone wants to age in place and wants to downsize, they could move into the accessory dwelling and rent out the larger unit if they chose. But they can't sell it off. Okay? The accessory dwelling can be in a detached structure, as I mentioned earlier, but it does have to conform to setbacks, height, floor area ratio, and so on. And the, the size range goes from 350 square feet, which is the town's minimum for a residential structure. And we don't really know exactly where the 350 came from, but that's the minimum, we thought, sure, to sort of a towny, tiny house, a bigger side of a tiny house, but there it is, up to 750 square feet. Now, there, you can go up to 1,000 square feet with a special permit. And then, the other problem with the current bylaw is that when you sell your house, your special permit expires for your accessory dwelling. Well, if you've gone ahead and put in a kitchen, you can imagine how hard that would be, that the new thing would be a permanent status. You would, it would go along, when you sold your house, it would be a house with an accessory dwelling. But you could only have one per lot. Okay? Now let's contrast that with a two-family. So with the two-family process, first of all, we're a little more worried about what might happen here. So we want to start off with a special permit process so we can see what's happening. But I should say, if you look around West Concord or go down, you know, in, in Concord Center, there are plenty of two-families. Okay? But these two families were all built by and large before zoning. Because zoning, our zoning is single-family housing zoning for the most part. And so it's, you know, hard today to get a two-family unless you're doing it as affordable housing. And so, what we're going to say is, well, okay, we can sort of build upon that historical precedent of these two families and many people we've spoken to feel like they do fit in with the town. We can maybe start them up again. And so, within Resident C, there are over half of the, the two-families, existing two-families are in Resident C. Let's start there and just see how that goes. But one thing to note with two-families is unlike the accessory dwellings, they can be condoized and they can have absentee ownership. So they're much less restrictive. They're also less restrictive with regards to size. So as long as the two-family meets the dimensional and floor area ratio, you know, the height requirements within Resident C, it can be built as large as any house. But it has to be a duplex. In other words, it has to share a common wall between the two units. So it can't be in a, in a separate structure. So, it's a little bit different from accessory dwellings and it's an option that's useful in some cases. So we wanted to provide both of those as options. Now, let's move on to the Planned Residential Development Changes. So today, Concord has a Planned Residential Development Bylaw that requires a minimum of 25% of the, the site to be preserved as open space. Now, we benchmarked that 25% and 50% of that has to be upland. We benchmarked that number against all the surrounding neighborhood, surrounding towns. And what we found is that our number was the lowest. The other numbers ranged from 30 to 40%. And what we, when we also looked historically at the PRDs that have been approved, and what we found were, other than Milldam Square, which is right in the center of Concord Center, all of the ones that weren't affordable housing-related had over 33% of, of, of open space that had been set aside. So we felt that really what we needed to do was to legislate that into our bylaw to be more in tune with how other towns do it and as well as just historically how these developments have happened. The other thing I should mention relative to opening, preserving more open spaces, we're really trying to encourage more compact modes of development, you know, rather than just single-family and duplex housing, to try to actually create more compact structures, maybe more multi-unit structures that can be quite attractive and that take less footprint. Because if you look at the Planned Residential Development Bylaw, its objective is to preserve open space in contrast to a subdivision plan that would just carve everything out into standard lots. The next thing that we expect to do is to require site plan review for Planned Residential Development. So we do site plan review on lots of different projects as the Planning Board. And it has just a set of standard criteria that we go through. We do quite a comprehensive review on Planned Residential Developments already, but this would codify those terms. And then, thirdly, the sustainability criteria. So to mandate low-impact development, which is stormwater-related as well as green building design. So the, you know, we're, we're trying to codify that in the bylaw and we've found that about half of our neighboring towns already do. Then the final change would be to make the Planning Board itself the permitting authority for Planned Residential Developments. So today, we, as a Planning Board, make a recommendation to the Board of Appeals and then the whole process goes to the Board of Appeals and, you know, they go through and they issue the special permit. So both from a point of view of streamlining the process for developers and ourselves, but then also be, just to align the town around, when it comes to new developments, the Planning Board really should be the authority. When it comes to redevelopment, you know, like you're putting an addition on your house, you need to go into the setback area, things like this, that's the ZBA's criteria. They're the court, we're the legislature, if you will. We're the governing body there. So, and we did meet with the zoning board and in fact, they agreed with this kind of demarcation of authority. And in fact, within, in Massachusetts, either the Planning Board or the ZBA could be the permitting authority here. So it seems to make sense. We're also, as an incidental thing, probably going to take over Hammerhead Lots as well. Real exciting. Okay? Okay? So, you know, the power grab, I just, you know. Although it won't be to me because this passes and I'm off the Planning Board after that. So, the next thing is the Thro Depot. So the Metropolitan Area Planning Council does a lot of work for different area towns, planning boards, and then departments. And they have set aside around 40 grand to work on the designs or the concepts for a transitory development that would be in this Thro Depot area. So, we're, we already started working on that. So that's, that's just getting underway, but it will go over the next year or so. And as a result, we're not looking at this as driving zoning bylaw changes in 2020, but I think it's a very great public interest and worthy of you having a look in the, in the breakouts. Okay? So, people have asked a few questions. We will have more detailed, you know, frequently asked questions for each of these four areas, but one that's sort of a general question that came up that I thought I should cover here is just, you know, hey, there's a lot of focus on Resident C, you know, for example, for the, the two-families, you know, are we right now looking at expanding the, the housing outside of the village centers a lot other than the accessory dwellings? And right now, we're not in, you know, once again, the Comprehensive Long Range Plan gave us some guidance there, basically suggesting that it's good to put housing close to the centers and to preserve open space when you're away from the centers. And so that's what we're trying to do. The PRD bylaw, we looked at the available sites for PRDs. At first, we were thinking, okay, we'll do a sort of core PRD for near the village center, a village PRD if you will, and we'll do another PRD bylaw for things that are further away. But what we found is there are only two available lots, as it stands right now, that meet the guidelines of having at least an acre in the residential districts that could be developed into PRDs right now. So, we thought, okay, what we really need to focus the PRDs on, bylaw changes are in things that are more than half a mile away from the village centers. Future ones are likely to be there and that's why the very strong open space focus. What impacts will there be on the town from doing all this stuff? Well, clearly, the housing impacts themselves are direct and I've spoken to those, but there are other knock-on impacts that happen. One, of course, is that there will be some children in some of these units. And so there's an impact potentially on the schools. We are trying to get together with the school committee to try to understand that. And there is some preliminary data that we have about the number of school-aged children in some of these developments that kind of gives us... in some of these developments that kind of gives us the slightest glimmer of what might happen. The second is, what other impacts on town services, on property taxes, et cetera, would these initiatives potentially have? That falls in the purview of the finance committee, so trying to get some input from them. And then the third one is water and sewer hookups, because especially if you have a two-family, you need a separate hookup to the street, and those are kind of scarce. So we need to get the Public Works Commission on board with these changes. So those are all three things that we need to get done between now and the public hearings period in March. So we're fortunate to kind of be at this phase where we kind of draft bylaws, and we can take this before the other committees and try to get some clarity on that. And so we hope by town meeting that we'll, we'll be able to really give a more directional view on each of these points. So why should people support this? Well, we'll have a lot more to say at town meeting, but if you look back at the comprehensive long-range plan, you know, broadening the diversity of Concord's population and housing stock is an essential component. And so, and that big idea number two, out of three big ideas, was to provide those housing choices. So we feel that we're really trying to do the town's bidding here and to try to make Concord what people want it to become. So we're right at the time, and so what I'd like to do now is to organize those breakouts. So as you can see here, we're going to have four different groups. Two of them will be in this room, and two will be in separate rooms. So the Thorough Depot breakout will be through that doorway in the break room, which is a great name for a breakout. And so, and there's snacks in there and stuff, so if you're interested in that. The next, the other one outside of the room is the select board room back over there, and those privileged folks will be discussing the planned residential development. In here, we'll have a group talking about accessory dwellings, and another group talking about two-families up here. Oh, sorry, two-families is back there, and accessory dwellings is up here. So I'm going to sort of say go, all right? And folks should go to their respective spots that they're interested in. We'll go for 15 to 20 minutes. After that, we'll stop and we'll switch, okay? So go to it, everybody. Okay, everybody, we're getting back together again, and now's the time where we're going to go through five-minute summaries. Oh, sorry, is there no? It's, the green light is on.
This one's on.
Okay, well, I can just stand up.
In the meantime, did anybody lose their glasses?
And.
And, and you may need new ones. Nobody? All right. They're up here.
Okay, so now, what we're going to do is some brief, five-minute summaries for each of the four breakouts, so you can hear what your neighbors had to say about each of them and the feedback we've collected tonight. So Kristen, can you start? If the, yeah, I think, because that mic's not so good.
Sure. All right, well, first of all, thanks, everybody, for attending tonight and for giving some good feedback and jumping right in and going to multiple groups. We had about, you know, almost a little more than 20 people come and talk about accessory dwelling units, and overall, the feedback was very positive, like, yes, let's do this, let's make this happen, so at least we know we're heading in the right direction. Some of the things that we're going to look into based on the feedback are parking, you know, should we have parking restrictions, because we don't want to see excessive impervious surface as a result of this additional unit? So we'll look into that, and a corollary to that is, you know, what's it going to look like? A town meeting, should we have a mock-up of, you know, here's what it could look like so people can envision what this would look like and any additional paving? There was questions about, kind of, how can we maintain the integrity of it? In other words, if this really is intended to be an in-law apartment or a small dwelling, how can we make sure that, one, you know, we verify owner occupancy, so that it's, so that that keeps with the intent? And Marcia told us that we are, you know, verifying that with affordable housing, so we're going to kind of look into ways that we can continue to verify and make sure these are being used in the way that we had intended. Related to the owner occupancy, we talked a little bit about, or there were questions about Airbnbs. You know, are we potentially losing opportunities if these are going to be used as Airbnbs? And we have a feeling people are going to continue to ask questions about that. So, you know, we're going to make sure that we have all of the relevant bylaws, which, for which there is one about Airbnbs right now or the bed and breakfasts, so that we can respond to those questions at the next, you know, at the public hearing and things like that. And then, you know, mostly, we're talking a little bit about size, you know, is, you know, by special permit, by special permit, will everybody get a thousand square foot instead of a 750 square foot, because, you know, you could do it? And so thinking about the zoning bylaws that are, or the building code restrictions right now that might make sure that they have a good habitable, you know, small 750-square-foot unit. And finally, there were some questions on, so we know that building code will be very relevant to the discussion here. And then, related to that, were questions about tiny houses. Can we, can't we? What would it look like? What if the tiny house is on a trailer? So what we're taking back is some good things to kind of go research, so we can, you know, produce, you know, a really well-thought-out draft bylaw for approval, and then respond to any questions that people bring up. So Burton, if you can think of anything else?
Thank you, Kevin.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, so we had a good discussion with two groups and ours. Some of the things that came up in both, actually, was why Residence C only and why not to expand into other areas, either just expand to a new area, oh, sorry, can you not hear me? There we go. Why not expand into, into a new area or include Residence B or Residence A? And part, there were two parts to this. One is that we want to look at this in the, in the overall scheme of smart growth, so that's where we're starting from, and focusing in the transportation areas and the town centers. And also, you know, this isn't limited to just now. In the future, if this is something that's successful and there seems to be good reason to expand into other areas, you know, it can be done at a later date. There was a question about the metric for measurement, about what is included in this two-family, and so there would be exterior walls in and include garages.
Gross floor area.
A gross floor area, yep. And there were questions in both groups about paving and the impact that might have in having two-family homes in a, in a single lot. We talked about how that could be addressed in stormwater management in the future, and also, what do I have here? It could be part of the special permit process. One question came up about, you know, making sure that these homes are energy-efficient from the, from the start. Again, I think that's something that could be included potentially as part of the special permit process or addressed in the future. And I think those are most of the main ones that came up.
What the special permit criteria was.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Oh.
You are, you are better at that.
The planning board reviews special permits, there are different, there's different language that they can have to meet, different criteria that they have to meet. So for example, for the floor area ratio bylaw, there has to be no reasonable alternative, which is a very high bar. But for sort of the more ordinary permits, it's more of like, it is, you know, not negative impacts to the neighborhood, doesn't undermine the bylaw type of thing, and so it's a more sort of routine type of approval, unless there's something egregious that's being proposed. And that's the language that we have. It's actually in our zoning by, in our warrant article. I don't have the exact wording in front of me, but that's the intent.
And just one other thing that did come up that was also in yours was the short-term rentals, Airbnb-type things. And the same response that Kristen had, there are already existing guidelines and restrictions on, on those, so they would apply here as well. I think that's, those are the main ones, yeah. Okay.
So next is PRD.
Thanks, everyone, for your wonderful input. In general, there was a lot of interest in two aspects of the PRD. One was making sure that we're maximizing the quality and quantity of open space that we're getting in our PRDs, and the other is making sure that we're as out-front as we can be in having the construction be energy-efficient, green-building, sustainable, LID. So specifically, on the open space, there was a lot of concern about the quality of the open space, and folks were mentioning wanting to look at the functionality of the space that was proposed, the connectivity, both within a site and also to adjacent open space areas, and then the context of the site, especially in terms of public lands owned by the town or other regional resources. And then looking at the quantity of open space, there was definitely a sentiment that we could be even more aggressive than going and going beyond 33% that we're now proposing, especially in the context of surrounding towns, which are more aggressive. And then part of that was also looking at our requirement for upland versus wetland protection, and maybe changing the definition of what's included in upland, or changing the percentage required of upland to have the developer be required to protect more land that isn't already protected under either the state wetland regulation or the, or the town bylaw. In terms of green building and design, folks wanted to see more, and they're definitely, I heard a sentiment that Concord, who is, you know, often out-front on these issues, is a little bit behind some of our neighboring towns in terms of what we're doing to really promote low-impact development and other, and green building design. So I think there's a lot of interest in getting up to speed on what regionally our neighbors are doing in the, in the metro area, as well as our more immediate neighbors. So folks want to see, are wondering if we can go all-electric in our PRDs, so no more gas hookups to the PRDs. And then really flushing out what we're looking for in terms of LID and green building design. Are we talking about criteria? How are we defining that? How can we do that? We want to go beyond the stretch code. We want to see more fossil-fuel-free design. And to that end, there's an interest in going actually beyond PRDs to implement an LID requirement across town for all development and not just within the PRD. So that was a lot of support for that. As well, always wanting to protect trees. How can we protect more trees, especially on the PRDs? So two more important points. One was that an interest, as we're regulating more, to maintain flexibility with the PRDs, to make sure if there was an interesting and aggressive project that came along that really wanted to do something advanced with, you know, housing development that might be more expensive in the, the construction of the housing, you know, maybe there's some trade-off that we can make with the amount of upland, open space that's required, or just to be more flexible to... And then finally, I think there was a useful discussion with wanting to making, make sure that we're coordinating and connecting with some great resources that we have in town. There's a lot of groups that have been looking at green building and LID and climate change and making sure that we're, we're all connecting and coordinating to make sure that we're soliciting that input. So we brainstormed about some ideas to make sure that we're doing that. And where's, oh, hi. Did you have anything else?
I'm going to do this about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, final.
I was, I was just taking more notes than Alan, that's all. So some of, we specifically asked participants about their, some of their thoughts for improvements for the Thorough Business District area, their concerns, and some of the concerns raised were definitely, one, the issue with the timing of the traffic signal at Thorough and Sudbury, but a concern addressing accessibility within the district itself, where you do have the train tracks that cut through and you can't, it's, it's not like Concord Center for a pedestrian experience where you can be at one end of the street and visually see down the street and where you want to go, and that, that visual pedestrian feeling in the Thorough Depot is not theirs, and especially when it comes to accessibility and going from one side, basically one side of the depot and having to get across the commuter rail, which is not an accessible station, does not have the level boarding platform. And so how do you, how do you address that accessibility issue within the district? Another concern was with redevelopment of the area. How will that impact the current rents for the shop owners and their ability to stay in that area if there's, you know, some type of, you know, very vibrant and profitable redevelopment for those property owners? And another concern was dealing with some of the existing configurations where, like at Thorough and Sudbury, you have two gas stations and you have two small developments where their parking is at the front. So that intersection from a pedestrian standpoint, a walkability, is not very inviting. Some of the needs that, comments that came back was a need for a more vibrant village that included mixed use and incorporating more residential development, a need to look at being more creative with parking policies and, where did it go? Oh, and coordinating of, you know, parking policies, not just for the property owners and their parking, but also the town and how the town treats its parking, and looking at all the parking as an asset, and how do you coordinate that? And another need was being creative of that use of parking and housing and drawing in more young professionals that want to make a more vibrant village. And thinking about redevelopment and creating this as to being a destination, it needs, there needs to be something that draws people to the place and wants, want to be there, stay there, and walk in the village, similar to Concord Center. And then lastly, really thinking about each of the three villages and the connectivity between those villages, and not just thinking of these as, you know, one individual place. So, you know, somebody can be in the Thorough Business District and have, whether it's through signage or wayfinding for bicyclists, that can draw you to the next village and that different experience, because all three of them have a different feel and a different experience, so that was.
Okay, thank you. So just in closing, first of all, thank you for all of your input tonight, and then just in terms of what you can expect to happen next. So the next thing that will be happening is we will be So, the next thing that will be happening is we will be tuning up the language in our draft warrant articles, and we'll be submitting them to the town for publication late January, early February. Then in February, on February 25th, we'll have the Planning Board public hearing, in which we'll give detailed presentations around each of the warrant articles, and then later on, of course, town meeting, where we hope to get your support. So, thank you, and I think we can adjourn 15 minutes early, so.